To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Do you, Attorney, want to chime in on this because this is a special meeting?
The agenda is as is set out on the agenda that was published for the special meeting. Because it is a special agenda, no additional items should be added to the agenda as published at this time.
Okay. So in that case, I'm just asking for a motion to adopt the agenda, right?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have an oral communications on here. Does anybody wish to speak on this? Okay, moving right along, got new business. Item A, approve the following resolutions concerning wages, hours, and working conditions. Let me just read through them real quick and then we'll ask for a staff report. Number one is consider approval of resolution number 2013-43 concerning wages for general employees. Number two is consider resolution number 2013-44 concerning wages and working conditions for confidential employees group. Number three is consider approval resolution number 2013-45 for mid-management and professional employees. Number four is consider approval of resolution number 2013-46 for the executive employees' management group. Number five is resolution number 2013-47 for the confidential employee management group. Number six is consider resolution number 2013-48 for the International Association of Firefighters, local 2400 AFL-CIO. Number seven is resolution number 2013-49 for police chief. And number eight is 2013-50 for Police Commander Association. And with that, we'll take another step.
Just a quick, I don't know, in my pack, and I didn't get the last resolution. For 50 police commander.
2015.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Stuart, do you wish to start in on the others while Sherry's getting those?
Sure, I can. All of the, let me give you a little bit of history where we've been. So in January of 2000, in December of 2012, or October 2012, the city council adopted a letter of understanding with the employees that was to run from January 1st of 2013 through December 1st of 2013. That letter of understanding was, had two main parts to it. One was a 1% pay decrease that was going to expire on December 31st of 2013 for the general employee group, the confidential employee group, the mid-management employee group, the firefighter employee group, and the police commander group. It also had a 2% pay decrease for the executive employee group, the confidential employee group, and the police chief group. That expires as of January 1st of 2013. The other major aspect of that letter of understanding was it set-
Sorry, January 1st, 2014?
14.
14, okay.
Sorry. The other major aspect of it is it's set for the calendar year of 2013, a flat dollar amount for the amount of money that the city would contribute towards health insurance for its employees. And it was the same dollar amount for all employees. When the LOUs expired as of January 1st, 2014, if there was not another agreement in place, then the existing MOU, which was dated back in the earlier 2000s, would take effect for health insurance, which would mean that the city would be responsible to pay the highest HMO amount as of January 1st of 2014. The city council gave staff direction, and its negotiators' direction, that the major concerns was to start to ensure that we had consistent ability to budget and to understand what our future costs were going to be. So for health insurance, previously, we had a health insurance that was based on the highest HMO. So we were basically at the whim of what PERS was able to negotiate for that HMO. If that HMO increased 15 or 20%, as it had done in a couple of years in the early 2000s, we would be responsible for paying a 15 or 20% increase in our health insurance. So those were the main, that was the major point that the negotiators were trying to work through. The city council also wanted us to start having the employee pay be linked to PERS payments. PERS is the retirement system that we have. There's a recognition from the city council that our pay is not just what we receive in salary and wages, but it's also a total compensation, so it's also based on what it costs the city for retirement and for health insurance. So what we have done is we linked future pay increases to future increases in PERS as well in the contracts. So let me run through the major provisions of the contracts. And for most of the employees, the major provisions are the same, and I'll point out after I talk about the major provisions, what the differences are. So the first major provision is for fiscal year 2014-2015, which starts July 1st of 2014. There would be a cost of living increase for all employees based on the San Francisco CPI as for the calendar year 2013. There is a limits to this. There's a, it's limited to 2% at a minimum and 3% at a maximum. The reason why we're looking for it to be based on the annual increase for the calendar year 2013 is this will allow us to include the right number in the budget. When we provide, when we start doing the budget process, we start in January, we start making estimates. Previously, we would not know the increase that we were going to give until April or May, and that made it difficult for us to budget. So we've gone back and said, for the previous calendar year, so that way we can budget for it. So for fiscal year 2014, the cost of living increase would be no more than 3% and no less than 2%. For 2015, 2016, the increase is a 2% to 4% based on CPI. So if CPI comes in at 2.2%, that would be what the increase would be. But also, we have tied that to what the increase in PERS would be for that year. So if there is a 5% increase or more increase in PERS, then we would reduce the amount of the cost of living increase by any amount over 5% to the point where the cost of living increase would be reduced to zero if it went to 7% or more. So we start linking the retirement costs to the current salary, because retirement is really just deferred income. And so that concept is now in the agreement. The other major point in all of the agreements is for health insurance. So for the calendar year, as I said, 2013, there was a specific dollar amount that the city was providing for health insurance, which was very different from what we had provided in past years. So for 2014, we will increase the amount that we dedicate to health insurance by 5.5% above what we provided in 2013. This is related to the increase that we saw in our Kaiser rate for our employees. The Kaiser increase was 11%. So we are paying for half of the increase that Kaiser had. For 2015, calendar year 2015, we created a formula with the employees where there's a sharing of costs for increases in health insurance. So we're going to, once again, look at the Kaiser rate. For the first 3% of an increase in the Kaiser rate, we would increase what we are paying for health insurance by 3%. The next 3% in an increase in Kaiser rate, so if Kaiser rate goes up between 3% and 6%, the employees will pay that 3, we will pay no more money towards health insurance. And then if there is an increase between 6% and 12%, we would then split that difference, that cost, or that increase with the employees. So a maximum amount of money that we would provide as an increase in health insurance would be 6%. After 12%, it would be the responsibility of the employees, except for the case of the mid-management, and I'll talk about that in a second. The other aspect in all of the agreements as it relates to health insurance is that the city would set aside $1,000 into a $1,000 per employee in a health savings account, South Savings Fund. What that will do is help the employees as years go by to mitigate maybe some of the potential increases in health insurance that we don't know yet. The other aspect is in 2015, the city will budget for 5% for health insurance increases. If the city does not need to use all 5% to pay for medical insurance as it relates to the previous provision that I talked about on how we're going to split costs, then the difference between what we do pay and that 5% would go back into that health savings account for the individuals. So for instance, if the Kaiser rate in 2015 was to increase 8%, the city would increase its payment to, for medical insurance by 4%, and then 1% would be put towards the health savings for employees to help offset future rate increases, or that rate increase that year if it's needed. The details of how that pot of money will be used has not been determined, because we don't know if the employees want to do it by bargaining group, by bargaining group, or if the employees want to all put it into a common pot and share it amongst all the employees. We don't know if the employees are going to want to tie it to an insurance rate for themselves, or if they want to do something else with it. We're hoping that after 2015 that we will have a better understanding what the Affordable Care Act has done for health rates, so we can have another conversation with the employees and with the city council as to how we want to pay for health insurance going forward. Those are the major provisions for the increases in salary and the increase, and how we're dealing with health insurance. The one difference is for the mid-management group, they have asked for a re-opener in case Kaiser rates go up above 12%. What a re-opener would mean is that we would sit down and we would have a conversation with the mid-management group if there was any desire for additional sharing of medical insurance costs. It does not hold the council to any decision, just says that there would be a conversation about it. There is another provision concerning wages for the different bargaining groups. There is a one-time payment for the general employees of $1,000. There is a $500 payment for the mid-management, professional employees, the confidential employees, and the police commander. Each of them would get $500 per employee. We have not settled on wages with the firefighters. So all you have in front of you for the firefighter union is the agreement on the health insurance side. There is also included in all of the agreements, the implementation of the PEPRA, which is the change that the state did to the PERS rules in 2012. The way that we have our current MOUs, they all talk about what percentage of money the employee is responsible for their retirement. So for the employees who are not public safety, we currently have two tier, we had two tiers prior to PEPRA. Our first tier was 2.7 at 55. So that means for every year an employee works for us, they would receive 2.7% of their annual salary when they turn 55. So if some, an employee has worked for us for 20 years, and they start when they're 35, they retire when they're 55, they would receive 54% of their salary. That was the first tier. That was changed in 2008.
54% of which salary?
Of their single highest year. That was changed with the 2008 agreement. The city council recognized, as we were doing the negotiations, that 2.7 at 55 was not sustainable for an indefinite period of time. But we were also running behind what a lot of other cities were providing for retirement. So what we did is for employees who were on staff prior to January 1st of 2008, they would receive the 2.7 at 55. But for any new employees hired after January 1st of 2008, they would be on a 2% at 60 formula. So that would be if you started, once again, when you were 35, you would be able to receive your maximum percentage of retirement at the age of 60. So you would have worked 25 years, 25 years times 2% would be 50%. So at the age of 60, you would receive 50% of your single highest year. And as you would imagine, that is a less costly plan than a 2.7 at 55. In 2012, and so in 2012, the state recognized, basically what the city council recognized in 2008, that a number of the plans that were afforded to employees was not sustainable. So they came up with a third plan, which is 2% at 62. And all three plans have different amount of employee required payments. So the 2.7 at 55 plan is 8% employee contribution. The 2% at 60 plan is a 7% contribution. And the 2 at 62 plan splits the normal cost of the retirement between the employee and the employer 50/50. So we wanted to make sure we have that language in the MOU going forward, and that's why you have that longer paragraph concerning the PEPRA. Also, we have in the general employees section, the continuation of the acting pay, which was part of the last letter of understanding, and the assignment pay, which was the last in the last letter of understanding. Acting pay is for when a person works at a position that is at a, that is already in the city in a classification, at a higher classification than themselves. So for instance, if we have a team leader in the public works department leave, and we assign a public maintenance worker 2 to that position, they don't receive team leader pay. What they receive is acting pay. So for acting pay, they would receive 10% for the first 30 days, and then 15% above their salary for the remainder of the time that they are acting. For assignment pay, assignment pay is when employees have taken on additional assignments, but is not in a different classification than what they're currently working in. This happened, this has happened more when we were, a few years ago, as we were reducing staff, and people had to take on new assignments. These have been brought to the city council when they've been, when these assignments have happened. So the assignment pay is not a pay that is, has retirement charged based, that is used for retirement purposes. So those are the things that are unique to the General Employees Association group. The other issue that is out there is that the bargaining groups would, have all asked for, and the city council, and we're asking the city council, is to do a total compensation study to help inform the negotiations starting for 2016. When, we would work with the bargaining groups to determine the different comparables. We would work with the different bargaining groups to determine how total compensation is calculated. And the reason for that is you want to work from the same data when you're having conversations. You don't want to start arguing over whether or not somebody's total compensation that they're talking about is appropriate or yours is appropriate. So we want to get together and have a meeting of the minds on that. The one difference in all of that is the mid-management group, they have felt that their positions are pretty unique compared to other positions in the county, because they do a variety of tasks, and that they would, they would use the firefighters as a proxy. Now, we don't have an agreement with the firefighters as to any agreements on salaries or on compensation studies, but they are anticipating that we would, that we would follow for on that. I'm trying to think if there's any other unique aspects to any of the agreements. I don't think so. So, the cost to these issues is that the impact of the one-time payment for the general employees is $20,000, because there are 20 employees in that bargaining group. The cost of the one-time payment for the other groups would be $8,000, because there are 16 people in all of the different bargaining groups, the confidential, the mid-management, and the police commander. The cost of a 2% cost of living increase, which would be at the minimum, and the reason I think it will be closer to 2% is we have seen the inflation rate for the second half of the calendar year drop. The first half of the year, the inflation rate, I think, was 2.4%. In October, the inflation rate was 1.9, and the inflation rate in October, I think, was 1.4 or 1.6. So we're seeing it decrease as the year goes on. I think we're going to continue to see that decrease. We're seeing gas prices lower than they were in October. So my guess is we'll be closer to the 2% this year than the 3%. So a 2% across the board cost of living increase would be $146,000. And this would be budgeted as part of the 2014-2015 budget. This would not impact our current budget year at all. The 5.5% health insurance increase that we would have for this year would add an additional, approximately $5,000 to the cost of our current budget. We had already budgeted a 5% increase as part of our budget for fiscal year 13, 14. So that half a percent is not a major increase to our current budget. The change in the exec, there's an, and I did miss one change. There was a change in the executive management contract. The, currently, our public works director is also our director of emergency services. When he got appointed director of emergency services, he received a 10%, basically an assignment pay would be what that was. That 10% assignment pay was not part of his salary, and it was not, therefore, not part of his retirement. We are including, you know, the recommendation is to put that 10% into his salary, which would then mean that he would be eligible to have PERS on that. That would cost us about, the additional cost to us for this fiscal year would be $1,500 for that, and then for going forward, it would be about $3,000. And I say that, and I'm thinking about that off the top of my head. I think that's right. I'm thinking it might actually only be 2,000, because our PERS rate is only about 20%. I'm sorry. It'd only be 2,000 going forward. So that was a change that would be part of the executive management group. So that, I think, is a quick summary of everything. What we need for you tonight is to adopt the resolutions, to implement the letters of understanding, so we can update the memorandums of understanding going forward. If there are any questions.
Council questions? Ray?
I got a couple questions.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Cliff.
Stuart, the, with that 2% COLA citywide across the board, you said it's 146,000. How is that, sorry to put you on the spot, I should have asked you this before the meeting, but how is that broken up between all the different groups that's possible?
I would need some time to figure that out. I'm sorry.
I'm just, okay. I mean, is it, all right, yeah, I apologize for that. But yeah, if I could get that information, that would be great.
Yes.
And then, you know, I know you did the breakdown for the healthcare, you know, showing what the contributions would be, and so we pay the first 3%, the employees pay the next 3%. If it goes that high, and so you used 8%, so you got 6%, you, 2% is left over. That would make our contribution 4%. We're on the hook for 5%. So we put 1% into this kind of rainy day fund.
Yes.
If the Kaiser rate increased to, was only 2%.
We would put 2% aside, and we would increase our medical insurance contribution by 2%, and then we would put 3%.
Okay, so we wouldn't be doing 3% because we're on the hook for-
For 5.
For 5.
Yes.
We go up to 3, so it's only that additional 2%. So we'd only have to put 2% in.
No, we would put 5% in, because we only, because if it went up 2%, if the Kaiser rate goes up 2%, we would increase our medical health insurance contribution by 2% above what we're paying in 2014. So what we said, so what the contract says is the difference between 5% and what the city actually puts into medical insurance would go into a-
So it would be 3% then?
Yes.
That would go in. Okay. All right. And, let's see. Yeah, you know, that's it for now. Thanks, Stuart.
Terry?
I want to thank staff for all their hard work in bargaining with our groups and the work that goes into it. I think that the important thing is that we do get a handle on healthcare benefits. So I appreciate the work that went into it, and I don't think that discussing percentages here and there is going to change how we're looking at these things. So I have no questions for staff.
Lori?
Thank you. Yes, I do appreciate the work as well. I just have a few quick questions. So, the, there was the temporary 1% reduction, or 2% in some cases, and that's now returned. We've, you know, that, that is no longer the case. So, is that impact of adding 1% to 2% in salaries, is that considered in part of the fiscal impact? I didn't see it there.
Yes. So, that was already budgeted because that was going to go away as of January. So, the current budget that we have had that 1% and 2% being back in people's salaries starting in January. So, the 2% increase on the cost of living adjustment would be, or compounded on that 1% or 2% that went back.
Okay. And this rainy day fund for health insurance, is that something that other cities have done? Where has that idea come from and how long has it been around?
It's a relatively new idea. A lot of the times previously, cities were just paying whatever the increases in health insurance were. This is a proposal that was brought to us by the employees. They were looking at trying to capture some stability in, for themselves as well. So, one of the issues that the city council told us to be negotiating on was stability of our health insurance payments, and the employees were looking at the same kind of interest. So, what they looked at was saying, okay, how can we ensure a stability for the city going forward? And how can we assure at least, maybe not full stability for us, but some kind of relief going forward? But I will say that our lead, our outside negotiator, Ostris Rungus, who works with the firm IEDA, has negotiated this in one or two of his other contracts recently. Because as, I mean, the challenge is, is as people don't know what health insurance costs are going to be, and the cities capture stability and know what their increases are going to be, what that means is that the employees will not know what their future costs will be. So, they were looking for a way to capture both interests.
Okay. Thank you.
Ray?
Yeah, thanks. Couple of, first, an observation and then a couple of questions. One thing which would be helpful to me on a couple of the resolutions, the employee side, there are signatures, but the signatures are not legible as to whom the individuals are, and there's no designation of name. So, you really don't know who's signing it. At least I didn't know. I mean, you know because you're talking to them, but anyway, it would be helpful to have their names there so we know who's signing. In some cases, their signatures are actually legible, and in other, and in one case, there actually are names typed there. In a couple, it's a, it's sort of a mystery.
Okay. We will do that in the future.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, this, I just wanted to get clarification on this. I'm looking now at the resolution for the general employees, and this is something that's across the board, but it has to do with the acting pay.
Yes.
And if you look on the, the first page of the resolution, under number three, there's talk about the acting pay using percentages, 10% and 15%.
Mm-hmm.
You described before. Then you go back under number nine, which refers to the same Article IV, and I'm assuming we're talking about the same phenomenon. And there, we're talking about ranges of monetary amounts, 250 to 750.
Right.
So, I just wanted to get clarification on how they relate to each other or the consistency between them, just, just for clarification.
Sure. So, acting pay is when an employee takes on the job duties of another, of a higher role. So, it would be, for instance, if the team leader, if a team leader leaves the city and an employee then becomes acting team leader. Or when we are, you know, if a sergeant was to leave the city in the police department and a police officer is going to be assigned to an acting role as a sergeant. It's the same basic language in all contracts. So, it's when you take on the duties of a higher level position, is when you become an acting, you're acting in that position. An assignment pay is different from that. An assignment pay is when you take on job duties that you had not normally taken on, but you're not acting in another person's role. This happened a lot when we were reducing staff. You know, when we lost the assistant to, when the assistant to the city manager, we didn't lose him, we know where he is. When the assistant to the city manager retired, there was a number of job duties that he gave up at that time. He had given up, you know, he was doing our redevelopment work, he was doing open space and ecology, he was doing tree permits, he was doing special projects. All of those types of jobs still had to be done, so we put him off to other people. So, no one person was acting as the assistant to the city manager. So, but they were, so people were doing aspects of that job. So, we did not, you know, so that's not an assignment pay or acting pay, sorry, it wasn't acting. We weren't going to pay somebody 10% more than they were currently making to do an aspect of somebody else's job, or 15% more. So, what we did is we said for a fixed dollar amount, you can, you will take on additional assignments. And the fixed dollar, you know, the fixed dollar amounts is between 250 and 750 dollars. The assignment pays that we have done to date have been $500 a month. These, as I said, these have come to council previously. At the time of the retirement of the assistant to the city manager, I think, three people, his job duties were shifted to three different people. So, for the cost of about $18,000 to the city, we were doing, I won't say as good of a job, but we were doing, you know, a lot of the aspects of the job of what the assistant to is doing. We are currently down to two positions that are getting assignment pay. You know, and both, as I said, both of those have been brought to council previously. I could talk about them if you would like me to, but I, we've already gone through those in different staff reports.
Yeah, no, I just wanted the clarification between the acting and?
Yeah, acting is when you take on all the duties of a higher level. Assignment is when you take on different aspects of different, and it could be different levels.
Right. Got it. Okay. That, that's exactly what I was looking for, so thank you.
Okay.
I have another question about the resolution number 48, and that deals with the firefighters.
Yes.
And it's really only dealing with health insurance?
Yes.
But the title of the resolution is concerning wages, hours, and working conditions. Maybe the title should be different?
It, it could be, but it's an interesting question.
But it's not consistent with all the others.
Right. And the challenge is always how a bargaining group is going to look at what a aspect of their contract is. So, we wanted to be as general as possible in that case. So, you know, the idea of way, you know, the overall MOU deals with hours, the overall MOU deals with wages, the overall MOU deals with working conditions. We're making a change to that MOU. We just thought in order just to be as broad as possible. I mean, we could have just said wages, I guess.
Well, it's not really wages.
It's compensation.
Health insurance, compensation.
Right. And, you know, and that's where I would, you know, the way that it's termed in bargaining groups, it's, you know, that's considered wages, kinda. We could change the title, but I mean, it's just?
It's really more, just a, just a concern for me that it's not misleading in some way to somebody comes back and says, oh, you know, the resolution title says you're doing so-and-so, but in fact, you're only doing such-and-such. And so, it's almost really a question of legality. I mean, if the city attorney says it doesn't make any difference, then I'm not going to push it, but it just struck me that there's a dissonance there.
The term wages, hours, and working conditions is sort of the generic term for everything that we, we talk about in, in bargaining. So, I, I think that it's probably not going to be a problem when you have the title in the resolution. You still look at the body of the resolution in terms of what it actually changes, and since this is related to the wages, I think that, that we're okay.
Okay. All right. That was my, and then one?
Go ahead.
The other point that I think we should make is that, and it's obvious in the firefighters that we only have an aspect of their total MOU before us tonight, that is the health insurance.
Yes.
And we don't have the police at all, in fact.
Correct.
At this point.
Correct.
So, I think we just have to say that those are still under negotiation?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it? Okay. Well, thank you, staff. I know this is not an easy process and started over, over a year ago.
Yes.
And a lot of time is spent on negotiating contracts. Unlike the private industry, if you have no union to deal with, then this is it. Take what you get.
Right. That was very much what we did with the hourly employees last time.
So, it's, yeah, two different contrasts, you know, certainly. And I know it's a painstaking job, you know, especially on Stuart on yours and Maria's part, and so, kudos to you for getting the majority of it done. And hopefully, next year, early next year, we'll be able to get all of our employees on.
Right.
So, with that?
If I may, Mr. Merrill?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have some comments.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. You know, I just, you know, I wanted to thank all the labor groups who have signed so far. And I know, like you were saying, Clark, you know, it's, it's a process and you give and you take and, and hopefully, in the end, you know, you work it out. You know, I'm glad that we were able to eliminate that 1% reduction that we took away from the employees last year, and now we can implement a cost of living adjustment for them. But I'm glad that we did it in a, in a smart way where we kept that amount at a, at a reasonable increase and tied it to the pension. If it went up too much, that, that would be adjusted. And, and I like that, the, the feedback that we got from the labor groups in regards to healthcare, and they came up with that rainy day solution, and I thought it was, it was a good faith effort to, to come up with something that gives the city some assurance about how much it's going to spend, but also provides a way to help cover increased potential costs for our employees. And then, I'm glad that we have the acting pay and assignment pay language in there because no one wants to be kind of in the dark about what they should be compensated. And I think that, that's smart, you know, everyone's on the same page. So, I'm glad that's, that's part of this. And the last thing, you know, you mentioned, Ray, that, you know, we don't have police and we're kind of half-baked with fire, and, you know, I hope they're watching this, and I hope that they, you know, come to the table and, and, and agree to what the other groups have as well, and that we can move forward. And, yeah, so I hope that happens.
I mean, let me just say with police and fire, you know, we have very good working relationships with them. I think it's just a matter of time, of timing, more than anything else. The challenge is always trying to get everything done at once and trying to set up all the meetings that you need to set up. So, I think it's more, I think that's more of the issue that we were facing, was us coming under the time crunch. The employees recognize that they were trying to do it by the end of the year, but with police, you know, all of our, most of our employees are here every day of the week, whereas with police and fire, their negotiators are on shift, so it's always difficult to make all the, all the calendars work for police and fire. So, that's, I think that's a bigger reason is what's going on.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure.
That's a good point. Any other question, clarifications? Okay, so, city attorney, just a point of clarification, so do we do motion for each resolution or do we just do item A or how do, how do we proceed?
If the, the vote on all the resolutions is going to be the same, then you can take one vote on all the resolutions together. You just list them off and, and vote on them as a group. However, if one or more of the council members does not want to vote the same on all the resolutions, then that particular resolution should be pulled and voted on separately.
Okay. Do we have anybody that's going to vote anything to the contrary of anything? Okay, then entertain a, a motion for resolution number 2013-43-44-45-46-47-48-49-50.
So, moved.
Second?
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will say that the employees are very grateful for, you know, having talked with all of them, they're very grateful for the contracts that we were able to negotiate and council's concern and appreciation for them.
Okay. Very good. Well, we appreciate them too. You know, I know sometimes it's tough and it's hard to show monetarily, but they certainly have done a good job through rough times, you know. That's certainly appreciated. Okay, that brings us to mayor council matters, which is some of the stuff that we moved the other night from our Monday night agenda and written communications, and I didn't have any particular written communications. I don't know if anybody else did, so, okay. Ray?
Good. Sir? I just wanted to point out, communication which I think we all received, but it's not pertinent immediately, and that was having to do with the appeal of A. Thomas' Avonit. I think we all received that. Yeah. So, that, just on the record, we did receive that.
Yeah, and that's something that's going to be heard, when, when are we looking at? In February? February? Yeah. Item B, which is review, revise council's subcommittee appointments list and make further adjustments as necessary. Now, I know we kind of discussed this and I think on a list that we have tonight or highlighted things that we discussed the other night, but they weren't necessarily So, I mean, looking over the list, I, I see certainly some of the changes that we looked at making. At the very end there, items 37 and 38, I think those could be combined, the emergency services, health and safety issues into one, one subcommittee.
They came from two separate council members, neither of whom knew the other was going to make a suggestion.
And being that I've been in on both conversations, I know you have very different ideas in terms of what you're looking at.
What they're supposed to do, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that?
You might want to talk about it a little.
Yeah, you might, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should probably do that at the end because these are new.
Yeah, that's a new, and the council may not want to do it, so.
They might not, yeah.
Yeah, so, as a whole.
But I think we should talk about, you know, the makeup of all the other subcommittees and, and the whole Sepia Richardson issue.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, why don't we just go down the list here and see if there's any other changes. Right now, Association of Bay Area Governments and League of California Cities, number one and two is the mayor, and mayor pro tem, and these don't require necessarily a whole lot of attention, it's just more of a formality. And Airport Land Use Committee, Terry is the representative, and Ray, you're the alternate. Anybody wish to change or?
None willing to stay.
Okay. San Mateo County Emergency Services Council, this is one that takes place down at the county of San Mateo, and it's generally a quarterly meeting, maybe twice a year. And I'm currently on that. I wish to remain on it unless somebody else really wants to do it. I'm hearing anybody. Number five, City and County Associations of Governments, that one I was on, and Terry, you were the representative, and Terry, you wish to be the main representative, and, and Lori, you wish to be the alternate, right?
Yeah, I was the alternate and, yeah. That's fine.
I said it wrong.
Yes, that's okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a point that, I guess to Terry and Lori, that, that I think this is a really important role to play because what CCG does, not only do they have a lot of county-wide responsibilities, but they, being the congestion management agency, which is their main reason for existence, they make recommendations on the allocation of transportation funding. funding. And they also establish policies that determine the allocation of funding. And they work with the transportation authority to establish infrastructure project priorities for funding. So it becomes an extremely important body for us to have really involved and effective representation. And I know both of you are going to do a great job and I'm pleased you're, you know, stepping up there, but I just want to reemphasize, you know, how important this particular representation is. I mean, they do a lot of things beside congestion management, but that's the most important. And with the Valance coming up and all the things we're trying to get in the way of infrastructure funding and so forth, CCAG is really important.
Well, I appreciate your concern on activity in this group. And I think having Lori as the alternate, she's expressed an interest of attending meetings even though she's not going to be the voting member in all cases. And that with her help and certainly the input of the rest of the council to keep an eye open for what is coming before them and what, giving guidance to Lori and I, I think that that we'll be able to do that and represent the city.
Yeah, and I think it's important too that, you know, the possibility that we do rotate every couple of years on this because it is such an important body. I think it's very educational for the whole council to really get a feel for that because it kind of brings everybody on board and not just one person, so.
You want to put it, you want to make it a rotation type position then?
Well, I think if we, I think we just kind of do it by, you know, pretty much by feel. I think by consensus, you know, that we do it. If somebody really ends up wanting to be married to the position, then, you know, we have to have a discussion about that at that time.
If somebody ends up, you know, in the leadership of CCAG, for instance, and, you know, you don't want to pull it away from them.
It's hard to get a leadership position if you're only there for a year or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of these bodies, it takes a long time.
Yeah. Sometimes it takes a couple of years to get, build up the credibility.
Yeah.
How often do we usually revisit this list? Is it only after an election or on a yearly basis?
I think yearly, right?
Yeah.
Yep, do it every year. Actually, the current chair, or he was the current chair, decided not to run for reelection. And so the official rotation wasn't up until March. But now the vice chair has taken over, I assume, because you were at the last.
The vice chair is still the vice chair and they're doing it because of language and how they were set up. They couldn't make her the temporary chair or the, it got very complicated on how that rotation would take place because of the term and the timing. So, yes, it is up for the next election, which I think is going to be in March.
Anything else on that?
Okay. Item number six, which is Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance. I'm currently serving that and that's the one that provides all the shuttle services in Brisbane and all around. And actually, Maria is our supervisory chair now. And so congratulations on that. I know it's more work on your plate and it's not an easy job. And there's no combat duty paid for that. But, you know, Brisbane actually has the biggest shuttle that the alliance manages. And this is there with commute.org. And we got, I think, what, 15 member cities in the county of San Mateo?
About 16 member cities, including the county. On a regular basis with our shuttles, we run about 350 people a day and annually about, I want to say about 89,000 people in and out of the Crocker Park area, our residents.
Which is a significant amount. And these are the shuttles that are provided for free for Brisbane citizens in case anybody is watching and doesn't know that and, or in case anybody in the council doesn't know that. And then at the end of the shuttle run hours, this is transferred over to Sam Trans. And then the same shuttle driver, they just switch aside, you know, kind of like what Clay does when he says, "Well, I'm the sheriff." No.
Correct, we do have that. In the midday service, one of the shuttles does convert into a community senior shuttle so that we have that ongoing service between 10:00 and 3:00 o'clock. And then about 3:30, 3:45, the commute shuttles pick up again in the afternoon.
Okay. And meets, what, quarterly? We meet quarterly on that, right, or bimonthly or?
They try to meet about every two months, depending on the amount of business they make.
And the meetings are on Thursday mornings at 8:00. Does anybody wish to do that? I'd be more than happy to relinquish that. If not, I'll remain.
You know, Clark, I mean, not that I, you know, want to take it over. I've, you know, being part of that CMAC committee, which advises CCAG on some of these issues, you know, we had a presentation in regards to the shuttle service. And so just wanted to share with you that, you know, I spoke with.
John Ford?
Mark Stevenson.
Oh, okay.
And so we talked about, you know, perhaps what it would take to have a second shuttle. Right now, our shuttle is more of a, you know, north-south thing. And then, of course, it does convert to the, I guess, that senior bus that goes to Tamp Fran and sometimes it goes to Cermoni. But, you know, basically the commute one is going up to the Ballbola Bart Station. But we really don't have anything that's going east and west and, you know, perhaps connecting with our medical facilities, Seton, Kaiser, looking at perhaps some of the other Bart stations, Colma, Daly City, South City. Also tying in some of our shopping needs, like the South City Bart Station is next to Trader Joe's.
This really is an interesting one, actually. And, you know, it kind of would make some continuity there. If you wish to be the representative, it would, you know, you could try it out for a year and if you don't like it, then shove it back.
If, yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay, cool. Yeah, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll make Cliff the representative?
There's a certain historical irony, of course, because when we had our own bus system.
Yeah.
We did have a bus that went over Guadalupe Canyon Parkway, did go east and west and did go to the Bart Station.
Went to King Road.
Yeah, and it went to Jeff High School.
Yes, that's another one, for sure. We got three Daly City schools over there.
They took away our bus system and then they didn't replace the service. So one of those historical ironies.
So one of the things actually has been asked on this, and I just noticed this, is they've always asked for an alternate. So I'd be willing to stay as an alternate, you know, and that way, you know, if you can't make the meetings or something, then.
You know, that would be good. And then we can meet together, say if there was a meeting, you know, with our own staff.
Yeah. I'll take you to your first meeting, I'll bet.
Okay, thanks, Clark, appreciate it.
Okay. Number seven, which is hazardous waste management and toxic waste services, recycling, solid waste. That subcommittee is made up of myself and Ray and I wish to remain on it. And Ray, I assume you do too. Anybody else?
That's fine, you can take the garbage.
Okay, number.
Much more.
Number eight, which is County Library JPA liaison with Friends of the Library and Brisbane Archives and History. And currently, Terry, you're the representative and Ray, you're the alternate.
I just have one comment there, if I may.
Go ahead.
When the history subcommittee, which is coming up, that Clark and myself, when we finally get this history book out, I'm hoping that we direct some attention to our own history collection and make it more publicly accessible, maybe, you know, protecting some of the things we have there. And also probably working on a better coordination between what we have and what the library has. And so you'll see the Brisbane history comes up twice here. There's one set of relationships that deal with the library and another that deals with our own. We have a history room, our own history room, and we have quite a collection, including, you know, a large pile of the old Brisbane Bee newspapers, which I'm hoping we'll preserve in some way or other. So, anyway, I think one of the things that needs to happen is that these two committees, if we go down the route that I hope we do, sort of need to coordinate so that we can be together on the same page as to, you know, who preserves what and who keeps what and so forth.
Okay. Good point.
Well, I will have to say, in this position, I've been more involved with the, attending the JPA meetings, which are basically funding meetings, business meetings, and really don't get into the nuts and bolts of what our library needs are. And I have not been active in the Friends of the Brisbane Library aspect of it because they, and they seem almost very different, very different activities. So I'm not sure if part of the liaison should be moved more in the history direction or how we want to change that. But while it is a difficult meeting, it's a meeting that occurs on Monday mornings at 8:15 in San Mateo. I've been able to attend them for the last couple of years, so I'm willing to stay doing that unless someone else has a penchant for it.
Burning desire for it.
With the liaisons with the Friends of the Brisbane Library, so that's just like one of the duties that is associated with this. But you haven't had any meetings with?
No, I have not.
Because they used to be quite active. I mean, and of course, they still do a lot of things like Live Mission Blue. No, no, they're, okay, Live Mission Blue and so.
And I'm involved with that group, but as a separate, as a personal commitment, not as a council commitment.
But it's some of the same people.
Yeah, and I've talked to them and, but we just have never, and I think that if we do get to where we have a desire or a more work to do on a possible library expansion or a library, you know, I think that that would need to be a separate, a separate committee that really looks at that.
Should be a two-person.
Well, yeah, and it might be part of the facilities subcommittee. It might be, I mean, I'm not quite sure.
We're kind of looking at that right now.
How it would work, but so far that portion of the, and I have done nothing with the archives and the history either. So I really haven't had that. And perhaps it's because Ray, as the alternate, has been interested in the archives and history. But it may be that we, it's a two-person committee and not really a alternate and a representative because I think there's more than one duty in that. And, you know, one is more carried out here in town and one is more of a board director kind of thing that's at the county level. So I think that maybe if we, I hate to say split the duties, or, you know, we could leave it the way it is and with that understanding.
Yeah, you know, I think you hit it on the head. I think there will be that time when, and probably maybe very soon, where we start to really engage the Friends of the Library.
Probably, maybe.
I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about that as a council and I think that could potentially be one of the major things that we talk about in the upcoming year. So I think, you know, having two people on that subcommittee or whatever, you know, that is what I meant, makes sense. And then, but like you said, with the county portion of it, just having, you know, an agreement between the two people who is going to be the representative.
And right now, I guess we are. The facility subcommittee is looking at that, so.
We're looking at the, like, the building part.
Right, the building part.
But then, yeah, you know, I mean, some, you know, sometimes these subcommittees, they overlap a little bit, right? You need to get feedback, you know?
Well, we did, we did meet with the library folks on a revised needs assessment, kind of like a reality check. Okay, here's, here's carte blanche. Okay, now let's crank it down to, you know, what's really going to be functional and affordable.
Well, and again, that wasn't, it was a different group than this JPA.
Right. It was, well, they're included in a JPA, but it was just a Brisbane portion of it.
Right, but I wasn't included in this.
Yeah, right. It was a facility subcommittee, so. Because you've got to figure out what the House is going to be first, right?
I understand that. So, and I know, certainly no offense taken. But again, you know, being kept in the loop as to what the facilities subcommittee is looking forward to and if there's something I could do at the JPA portion would be helpful.
Yeah. That'd be the job of the city manager, right?
It's usually budgets that we look at, you know, county budgets and so.
Okay, number nine, which is liaison with Chamber of Commerce Business Relations. And I was that before and Lori wishes to take that over?
That's right. I'm happy to serve as the liaison. As I, as you all know, I was on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm, you know, I know all the people on the board and I've worked with them, so I think that would be a good fit.
It'd be good. Number 10, the school and city subcommittee, that's what they termed as the two-by-two. And currently I'm on it along with Cliff. I know I wish to stay on it and.
Yeah, I would as well.
Cliff does too. And I know, Lori, you're interested in that too.
Right, I am interested in the school issues, but I understand you to have been involved with that, so I'm happy to, you know, have you stay in that role.
Okay, thank you. Number 11, city facility subcommittee, and that's Ray and myself. And I think I wish to stay on that and I'm sure Ray does too, so we kind of have some stuff in progress. Finance Subcommittee is Cliff and Ray. And assuming you both wish to stay on that? Both nod your head?
Painfully, yes. No.
It's the intellectual challenge of the week.
No, it is. You know, but ultimately, we're going to come up with something that I think the council will be, you know, we did slug it out and work together.
I talked with staff about that.
And work with something.
I'm buying some Legos for you guys.
Building blocks and porter's things together.
Priority-based budgeting. Sorry.
Okay, number 13, low and moderate income housing. And that's both Cliff and Ray also, so probably not much has happened.
No, not much has happened.
Disappearance of RDA, but you both.
But there are some projects that are being considered.
Yeah, there's some options out there, for sure.
Been having some conversations with Mid-Pent and I hope to.
Can you, your microphone over there?
It is, it's just I'm still struggling here. I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity for them to come up and talk to us after the first of the year.
Okay. That'd be great. Number 14 is JPA ALS. This is Joint Powers Authority and this is advanced life services, right, support. And it's paramedics and board of directors. And currently I'm on that board of directors. And this is an out-of-town meeting that happens on, what, by, every six months?
Twice a year, yeah.
Yeah, twice a year. And I wish to stay on that unless somebody else has got a dying desire.
So to speak.
No pun intended. Okay. All right. Number 15, Airport Community Roundtable. All right. Number 15, Airport Community Roundtable. And Cliff, you are representative on that. And I think you wish to remain so. And Lori, I think you were interested in that also, or?
I am. I mean, I don't know if they have a space for an alternate, but I'm interested in the noise issue as well.
Yeah.
Well, we probably should have an alternate for that. So, why don't we put Lori down as the alternate? Okay. Number 16, North County, excuse me, North County Fire Authority Board of Directors and Fire Services. And I think we meet once a year.
Yeah, once or twice a year.
Yeah, once or twice a year, and I wish to remain on that, Terry.
I enjoyed it. I find it very helpful, and I'm willing to stay on that.
Number 17, we incorporated into, well, this would change the numbering on all these, but that one was incorporated into number 31 was the Complete Street Safety Committee, right?
Right.
Okay. And Cliff, that means you are.
I am out.
No longer on it. Okay.
Although I, when we get to that one, we'll talk.
Right, Arts Subcommittee. That was, well, originally consisted of both Terry and Cliff, and you both kind of wanted to move on. And both Lori and I wish to take that over, correct?
That's right.
All right.
Well, we had never, I don't think we ever met or did anything on that committee, so.
We are.
The Arts Subcommittee? I certainly didn't.
Well, we'll be meeting.
Yeah, we're going to have a meeting.
Yeah, that we, well, that we nominated the.
The Arts Advocate of the Year.
Arts Advocacy.
Right, right.
Award.
Yeah, but I am interested in that because I have other ideas about, you know, I'm interested in the public art ordinance.
Yeah.
I believe that's being considered there, and the mural idea as well.
Okay, number 19, which is Public Information and Technology. And Cliff, I think you were on that along with myself.
Yes.
And I wish to remain on that. And then Lori, you wish to do that, right?
Yes.
Anybody else wish to be on that? Okay. Number 20, Liaison to Open Space and Ecology. And that was Ray and Cliff. You were both on that. And Cliff, you wanted to go ahead and give Lori your seat, if she was willing to take.
Yes, yeah, Lori is.
Sure, I served on that committee along with Ray, so I think that would be good.
Now consists of Ray and Lori. And number 21, which is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. It's called a HART. That's the acronym for it, which is a member agency committee member. And Cliff, you are representative right now. And that is appointed outside of Brisbane, right?
Well, there's two. So, there's this, where every city has a representative. Daly City, I think, is the only city that doesn't have a member. They don't want to pay the dues. So, and then there is the HART Board. And we meet after these committee meetings.
Okay. Number 22, which is the History Subcommittee. We talked about that. That consists of Ray and myself. And does it make sense to change horses? Right now, we're about ready to come out with the history book.
Yeah. Stretch.
So, we're just thinking of maybe reconstituting that in some form or fashion, once this is completed, to take a look at how we wanted to deal with our archives, our current archives, and what we wanted to do. And that probably is a budgetary item. So, we would have to meet with staff at some point next year, and once we get our book printed.
Yeah, you know, perhaps maybe after the book is printed, you know, looking at perhaps combining it with the Arts Subcommittee. You know, art and history tend to go well with each other.
Recreation. Number 23, which is Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group, the CAG, and Council Representative. And it really started out with one, and then Terry joined a group. And right now, I don't attend the meetings. And Terry, I'm not sure if you do. I'm taking the advice of the city attorney not to attend the meetings to participate.
I, since the issues of the draft DIR came up in the comments and the city attorney's recommendation, I've been to a couple of the meetings and found it very difficult to be asked to be at the meeting and then excuse myself from the meeting and watch the meeting, but not be able to participate. And so, I have also stopped attending the meetings so that we don't get into any.
Legal quagmire.
Legal quagmire, yes. So, I'm willing to stay on this for when the draft DIR passes through from their committee and they start dealing back with other issues, and so.
Yeah, I'm not sure how this is going to work. So, David, we would probably really look to you for legal advice, because once the draft DIR is done, and that's going to bring, I guess you'd call it, the draft final DIR, or the final DIR. But really, we wouldn't be commenting on that because it'd be processed through the council at the time. Is that correct? So.
That's correct, Mayor. Because the council is going to be the ultimate decision-maker on both the draft DIR and the final DIR when it comes before you. It would be advisable to continue the separation from any citizen committees that are reviewing it, making comments, because ultimately, you'll be reviewing those comments and making a decision. So, it would be difficult for you to participate in both groups.
So, may I ask, what is the purpose of having this liaison? If, will there be any point at which they will be able to participate?
Yeah. I believe this committee is not only for the, well, it is only for the Baylands. But it may continue, I mean, depending on what happens with the final DIR and where the project goes, the committee may have a continuing role. And at some point in the future, it may be appropriate again for a council member or council members to participate with that group.
We're on hiatus. The council's on hiatus from the group.
Right. Yeah, I think I've attended some of these meetings as an observer. And it seems to me that a good deal of what they have done in the past is really comment on DTSC remediation plans, and how they're going, and what the progress is, and et cetera, which is not having to do really with a development proposal in Brisbane. It has to do with a state remediation program. And that's kind of what they were doing for the first couple of years, anyway. And there probably will be additional things like that that are not directly connected to Brisbane development projects. On the other hand, in the near future, it looks to me as if it's going to be mostly connected to the Baylands Development Proposal. So, it becomes really problematic, as Lori points out. Membership there. So, I don't know how, it's a problem because, you know, the city should be really represented there. And I know, I don't think the staff has been going either. And so, one of the functions of that committee has been really undermined by this kind of legal quagmire, as you call it. And I would hope that we could give some thought to, you know, how we get at least somebody there so that the city's voice is present in their deliberations. Because this is a state advisory committee. What is not clear to me is whether it's only for the DTSC, or whether it could also be expanded to advise the Regional Water Quality Board, which is responsible for, you know, for the other part of the Baylands in terms of lead agency.
Yeah, they've had presentations there for the Regional Water Quality.
Airborne and Water Quality have both done presentations.
But is that body an advisory group to them? That's my question.
I think, well, as I recall, you're correct, Councilmember Miller, that it was set up under state law as an advisory group to the DTSC. So, I think technically, that is their role.
I actually served on that committee. I was one of the first members. And I recall there was staff at the, at least at the time I served. I remember John was on it.
Right.
The staff's got a slightly different conflict, but a conflict nonetheless. And that's why they haven't been attending.
Right. So, anyway, my concern is that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate, my concern is that because of all these conflicts, we're not represented there, which is kind of too bad. So, I don't know how to deal with that.
I was wondering, is it possible to have those meetings videotaped so that we would at least be able to view them, if not participate, without creating a conflict?
Sorry. It wouldn't create any conflict if you simply viewed the meetings, but I don't know what the staff situation is or the capabilities of recording those meetings.
Well, I'm not suggesting that staff provide for the videotaping as they do at the city council meetings. But I know that recently, the school board has started taping their meetings just, you know, with someone's iPhone and putting them on YouTube at little or no cost. So, perhaps that's something to consider here as well.
I mean, just keep in mind that, I mean, it is a separate group that is not a city-sponsored advisory group. So, the city really has no administrative or legal role in it.
Okay.
Terry?
Well, seeing as how we have concerns that we're part of the group yet tied as far as commenting, would it be something that we should be at least attending and taking notes? Or how can we, is this something we should come back to as far as, you know, what are? Not responsibility, but where our best interests lie on being represented, represented, or at least acknowledged at the table or in the audience? I just, I do feel that we're closing one door to keep from having a legal issue.
Now, you guys get an agenda. Is it emailed to you?
Yeah.
So, perhaps, you know, you make the determination, you know, if the agenda is appropriate, separate from the draft DIR.
Right now, they've been totally on the draft DIR and then also reviewing the remediation plans for the Schleg Locke site, and the appropriateness of the different ongoing remediation.
They kind of.
And they digress.
They really intertwine, yeah. So, it's a tough call. I mean, and that, you know, certainly defer to the attorney on because, you know, I don't want to, you know, be ignorant and like, duh, 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 you know, oop, you're getting sued because.
Who's the chair, Mark and Terry? Who's the chair of the CAG right now?
Mary Goodcast.
You know, perhaps, you know, if you could coordinate something with the chair and say that the first half of the meeting is non-draft DIR stuff, and you can attend it, and then when they go to the draft DIR, they could leave.
Well, maybe the biggest thing is probably to get just maybe asked for minutes of the meeting.
Yeah, and I do understand the council's interest in attending, particularly because it was set up to look at DTSC and regional water quality issues. Because of the fact that the council will be in the position of looking at the comments that are now being made on the Baylands, my job is to try to keep the council and its process as full of integrity in terms of the final decision as we possibly can, and to prevent any potential challenge based on an allegation of conflict of interest or improper participation. So, I think that even though it is a change from your usual role, that because of the ongoing situation and the fact that the committee is now commenting primarily on the Baylands, that the recommendation would have to continue to be that you not attend while those comments are in process. Certainly the suggestion, if there's different topics that are not related to the Baylands, you can attend for those topics. But I think the concern I'd have is realistically whether that's, it's possible to separate the agenda out and whether that's going to be something that's feasible.
So, I have a question. I know that they worry about getting a quorum, just like we would. And having two people that are on the BB CAG who are regularly not coming affects their quorum numbers.
Actually, four.
Actually, and then we have the city staff that's not coming.
And we have a planning commissioner that's on there.
And a planning commissioner who's on there that I believe is not attending. So, I think that it's possible that we would need to remove ourselves in good faith if we're intending to not attend and make that a semi-ongoing thing, that we may want to relinquish at least some of those seats so that we're not creating issues with them as far as having a quorum and being able to comment on their agenda items.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I think that's something we should check with the BB CAG and see how, or, I mean, this might not be the place or the time to, you know, really go into the details of that. It might be something we need more information on and then come back to it at another council meeting.
That's something I guess you could advise us on, David. Maybe take a look at that.
Yes, and I'd have to take a look at, I'm not sure what the bylaws or how the committee was established and the membership.
I drafted them.
Oh, then.
It's been several years.
I have no doubt that they're absolutely.
I don't recall any provisions regarding, you know, temporary relinquishment of seats. But there is, I'm sure there is a provision about quorums.
Right, right.
You'd have to look at the bylaws.
Disavow any acknowledging.
And maybe we've already been booted out for not showing up so many times in a row. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I think the advice would be to give us the direction to take a look at it. We'll take a look at the bylaws, figure out what it permits and what's appropriate, and then we can report back.
Okay, because I want them to stay functioning.
Yeah, I think that's the appropriate direction, is take a look at the bylaws and then give us some advice from that point, you know. So, maybe Lori still has it somewhere on her computer.
Sure she does.
I'm sure the bylaws are absolutely outstanding.
Well, I did come up with the name BB CAG, and it has stuck, so.
Brisbane Baylands. Okay, that brings number 24 Subcommittee, which is Economic Development. And this is a very dynamic Subcommittee, and it consisted of Cliff and myself. And Lori wished to be on that, so I yielded to her. Allow her to be on that, and I think that'd be good.
I think that'll be good, and it'll go hand in hand with the Chamber of Commerce liaison.
Yeah, it'll work well together. Number 25, City Sustainability Subcommittee, which is ad hoc. And that also has a Planning Commission and Open Space and Ecology Committee have appointments and.
Also Recreation.
And Recreation. And that is Cliff and Ray, and you guys have quite a body of work in progress. So, it doesn't really make sense to change there. And it is an ad hoc committee, so I think that was from 2010 when I was mayor. Number 26, Policy Advisory Committee. This is the San Mateo County Regional Housing Needs Assessment Subregion Representative. And Cliff, you're currently our representative. And you've kind of been working with all the housing, with HART and Low and Moderate Income Housing, even though we're not doing much on that.
Be another seven years, eight years, something like that. I think it's a seven-year cycle, and then you get an extra bonus year.
You wish to stay on that, huh?
If I'm around, sure.
Okay. Number 27, which is Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And this is one that was kind of confusing because, Clay, maybe you want to explain on this one here? Because last year, when we thought that SEPI resigned from the council, that she also resigned her seat, but that apparently is not the case. So, you want to give us an explanation on that?
I can give you an explanation. I'm not sure how rational it'll be. We actually did went through this a few years ago when council member Boligoff was an appointee to the Bouskwa. And then when he left the council, he voluntarily resigned from Bouskwa. In this case, SEPI's appointment is through June 30 of 2015, which is a year and a half from now. And under just the quirk of the state law, her appointment is not contingent upon remaining on a city council. You do not have to be on a city council to be an appointee to Bouskwa. So that's kind of where it's at. We've had a brief conversation with the city attorney. I haven't, I've got him very busy on some other stuff, so I haven't really asked him to take a closer look in terms of how that would work. And it's really kind of a question of whether the council wants to pursue, you know, a council appointment at this point in time, or whether you want to let it ride out. That's kind of your call. I think the mayor and I did talk a little bit about potentially asking former councilman Richardson to come and make periodic reports to the council. So we could certainly do that. And just as a reminder, we were kind of in a unique situation because we get an appointment from City of Brisbane as well as the GBMID. And our Public Works Director, Randy Bro, sits as the GBMID appointee to the Bouskwa. So we actually have two members on that board.
You know, I like the suggestion that you and Clark have kind of put out there, even though Randy is on the, you know, is part of the agency as well. It's nice to get a council perspective. So I think if SEPI wants to still be on that, to be a part of that agency, she should give a, you know, kind of, even though she's not on the council, but she can still, because of her experience, give that council perspective to us. But if she doesn't want to, I would hope that perhaps she would relinquish that, those duties.
Problem is, you can't make her relinquish.
No, 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 no. I hope that she voluntarily do it.
You know, I had actually received a phone message from her saying that she wanted to continue. But I think probably the best thing is to, you know, really have her come in, since it really does have to do with the whole city of Brisbane, is kind of keep us in the loop, you know. If you are a representative, that, you know, hey, come and tell everybody in the city what's going on, because that really does affect how we function from our water services and what we purchase and everything like that. So it's kind of a weird setup.
Yeah. I remember our discussion during the previous appointment process. And Clark, if I recall, you were interested in both CCAG representation and serving on the Water Supply and Conservation Agency.
Right.
And the council decided to sort of, and SEPI wanted both as well.
SEPI was already the CCAG representative.
Yeah, so we decided to give CCAG to Clark and the Water Agency to SEPI. It was kind of a, you know, split up, split difference, so to speak. Your fault. And the reason I bring that up is that I'm interested, Clark, in knowing, you know, how strongly you feel about, you know, still wanting that appointment and whether you think it would be best for you to be there rather than somebody else. And if you feel that way, then I would like to pursue what we can do about, you know, removing in that direction as soon as we can, which would require some kind of action on our part. But the question is whether that's legally possible. And what's interesting is that we were sent all this information about what it says in the state law and so forth. And even though it's clear that the person does not have to be a council member, it doesn't say a thing about how do you remove a person. It doesn't even say if they don't go to meetings. I mean, there's just no provision whatsoever for removing somebody. And so my question is, you know, what does that mean then? You know, do we have any authority to remove somebody if they're not attending, or if, you know, they're not representing the council, or they're not reporting to us, or, you know, whatever? Do we have any authority to do anything? And if Clark is really, you know, interested in still pursuing that role, then I would like us to, you know, pursue whether there's any legal basis for us to do anything. But from my point of view, it's really kind of up to Clark.
Yeah, well, it's funny that you say that, because this is one that Lori and I had a conversation about. And my name was down on the sheet as the representative, not really realizing that SEPI was the representative. And Lori was interested after I explained to her what it was. And she said, God, it sounds really interesting. And I said, well, it is, you know. And so she really piqued some interest in it, too. I said, well, if you really want to, I said, I'd be more than happy to give that up. And then, you know, and then we find out how all this actually works. So I said, you know, because I don't recall getting anything on it. You know, I was telling Lori, you know, that, God, they haven't had a meeting in a year. But that's probably not true. Yeah, not true. It's just, I never got the memo.
Are you one of the representatives? Why is your name down in addition to SEPI's on this list? Are you, you and SEPI are both representatives?
I think the presumption was that when SEPI left the council, that she then relinquished her seat there.
Right.
And then Clark was the one who had previously indicated an interest, so it would make most sense for him to move into that role. I think that was the presumption. But turns out that presumption was incorrect.
It was totally incorrect. I mean, you had me down, and I go, you know, and I was telling Lori, yeah. And he met, because I, you know, geez, I thought it was a real interesting group, but they hadn't even had a meeting since. I never got any information. And that's, and then we find out why. And then they go, well, how come your name's on the list? And I said, well, we went through the rearrangement last year because when SEPI resigned, we had to divvy up all the other subcommittees between four people.
Was SEPI providing updates when she was on the council?
Pardon me?
Was SEPI providing updates when she was on the council?
She was only there for one meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I remember she talked about it once.
Yeah.
Well, we did the assignments, and then she left. And so at that point.
That was CCAG.
Wasn't it previously?
With CCAG, she never provided us updates, you know, and stuff. And so that's kind of really what created the controversy.
It couldn't have been SI the year before.
It could have been SI, because I, who was it? Clark, wasn't, weren't you on the?
Bouskwa?
Yeah. Weren't you on Bouskwa, and then you gave it up to SEPI?
No, 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 no. I wanted it.
She was there for a year.
SEPI, when SI gave it up, SEPI became the representative. And then I wanted it because I said, you know, with that and CCAG, because I said, we weren't getting any reports. So, I mean, that was kind of the argument that I gave. And the council, the majority of the council at the time decided to go ahead and divvy it up between the two of us, so.
So, I mean, it may have been when SI had left, then I guess SEPI took it.
SEPI became the representative.
Yeah.
So she must have had some meetings that she went to.
Yeah, because I was the mayor while she did that.
That's right.
So.
Okay, well, it sounds like she's still interested in serving, so we'll just need to make sure that she gives updates, or, I don't know. Clark, are you interested in pursuing whether we?
Mike, one of my questions is, since we do have Randy Bro attending, we should be getting the agenda and the meetings and the, and we could get a staff report from him as to what's going on, and if there's something that we need to reach out to SEPI to make sure that she is, or encourage her to follow the wishes of the city or the council. And how often does this meet? Do you know how often this?
It kind of depends on what's going on. I, you know, and I'd have to check with Randy. I haven't, he usually keeps me pretty well briefed, you know, meetings and stuff. And I haven't talked to him recently about this. So, you know, it's very much driven by, you know, where they're at with agreements with San Francisco and bond.
Because I know there's quite a bit of stuff coming up with water, water coming up in the state level. And that was mentioned to me at a CCAG meeting that someone just in passing, that they had seen SEPI representing us. And that sort of surprised me.
Surprised all of us.
So on that same topic, are there any other things that she's representing?
That's why, this thing's just a one-off situation. What I can do in terms of the Bouskwa, how about if I, I'll talk with Randy, and I'll get you kind of a, I'll give you a weekly report update on what's going on with the committee, what things are happening. And if you'd like, I can certainly reach out to SEPI and see if she can come in and make a presentation, too.
Yeah, and maybe at least follow up on Ray's suggestion, too, to see what, you know, what power that we actually do have in case, you know. I mean, because, you know, both Lori and I have expressed interest in this.
Okay.
And so, I mean, just from that part, you know, I think we need to know.
Yeah. Well, how about this? I mean, I think that would be good. I mean, I don't know how much time it would take, David, to investigate. I mean, this costs money. So, you know, perhaps maybe you can have a phone call with SEPI, see, you know, because she did call you.
No, she did. And she just, you know, really wanted support for her to stay on it, you know. And at first, I didn't quite understand it, you know. And then I actually listened to the message again yesterday, you know, when we had talked about this, and Lori and I talked about it, and I go, hmm.
So she reached out because she knew this was coming up for reassignment?
Well, she was hoping that, you know, it still supported her on it. And I didn't quite get it, you know. It just didn't absorb for me, you know.
Maybe if you asked her to come to the council meetings, she might say, well, you know what, that's more work than I really want to do. And maybe, then she would give it up.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, it would be good to, since she has reached out to you already, to reach out to her first.
Yeah.
And then see what her position is.
Yeah, I could certainly talk with her, you know, about it and see, but.
Just a couple of comments. I actually saw the identical situation when I was in Sunnyvale, and I can't remember if it was BOSA, but it was another similar regional group where, unlike all the other regional groups, this one provided in its bylaws or in its state enabling legislation, that you had to be a resident, but you didn't have to be a member of the council. So it was the same situation. There was a council member who was appointed and either termed out or wasn't reelected. And so the council assumption was that they would have the seat open to appoint. And we're very surprised, as I think you were, to find out that, in fact, in this unusual circumstance, it's one of the few boards where the person can still stay on. I believe in that case, because, I mean, the problem is that the individual is still in the role of representing the city as a city representative, but doesn't really have any accountability to the city. Because with a regular council member, there are things that can be done. I mean, if somebody was not to attend meetings or to, I mean, not meet their responsibilities, then of course, if they're a council member, you can relieve them of the position and appoint somebody else. If somebody is no longer a council member, then they're on. But you don't have that same authority over them as a council member. But I think that certainly the expectation would be that if they want to stay on, that they have to, even though they may not formally be on the council, they certainly still have to provide information to the council on a regular basis, that they have to allow the council to provide input into whatever the issues are that they're discussing on the board on behalf of the council, and that that's a very reasonable request. If that request is made and then declined, then, I mean, it will take some additional research. And frankly, I'm not sure that we really have a lot of authority to do something. We can certainly take a look at it. There's always sort of the moral authority of saying, if you're going to be on this position, you need to fulfill what the job responsibilities are. But if there's a way to get either voluntary compliance or voluntary resignation, if they're not willing, if SEPI is not willing to take on that role, then that would probably be the best approach.
Okay. Then in that case, why don't we just draft, Clay, a formal letter, you know, for my signature, and just make a formal request that, you know, we add periodic updates when she has a meeting, come before the council.
Well, do we want just to find out what happened after the fact, or do we want input on what the city's view is on things? Or should we get that information?
Well, I think we can get that from Randy. I think we can get that from Randy, right?
Yeah, I'll get you an update on kind of where the agency's at. And then I think that can help inform this whole conversation.
Yeah. So I think that's a reasonable request. And then we'll just kind of go from there and then, you know, because apparently, judging from the phone message, she really wanted to serve on it. So again, it's just getting feedback, I think, which is really what we're asking. So. Sound reasonable? Okay. All right, let's go to 28, which is the Balans EIR Consultant Selection, Balans Community Survey. And Cliff and Ray, you're on that. And I'm assuming you still want to continue on that?
Yes.
And anybody else? Lee is on the Planning Commission. Cliff and Terry?
That's, well, that's, I don't think I was on that prior.
Oh, you weren't?
No.
Okay, you are now, I guess. You still want to be?
I mean, I can be. I'm on the planning issues also.
I was SEPI.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I was ever, I mean, I certainly haven't. I think the last time, I guess it was Parks and Rec that Cliff and Ray went to the meeting. I don't think we've had anything with the Planning Commission in the last year.
Well, you were interested in being the other.
I can be. If you're no longer interested in serving, I'd be happy to do so.
You know, we need to give you some.
Well, since you're on the planning issues, it makes sense to be on the planning liaison.
Okay.
And so I'm happy to do that with you, Lori.
Okay.
Okay, so Cliff, you're gonna bail from that?
That is correct.
Okay. And Lori, you're gonna be willing to do that, okay? He is on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Can I just say something about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Very quickly. Since we're going to be working a lot more closely with the Planning Commission than we normally do in the Balans planning process, I think this committee becomes unusually important.
But I don't think that the liaison's purpose is to, is it to answer the needs and the, on procedural direction with the Planning Commission, rather than influence the Planning Commission?
From my point of view, certainly not, you know, influence their deliberations. But we do need to have a regular increase in communication, because we're going to be dealing with a lot of the same stuff, and it's not really clear how we're going to be doing that. So that means a lot of communication between the council and the Planning Commission, because you often hear from planning commissioners, so what do you want us to do? What's the expectation? You know, how are we going to do this? You know, and that's what the liaison committee is for, to answer those kinds of questions.
You know, I think also with the TAP, the information, you know, the feedback that we get from that will also.
From the what?
From the TAP.
Oh, okay.
From the charrette. So I think, you know, we're potentially looking at rezoning these three warehouses. And, you know, and then there's potentially the public space. And how do we, how do we, you know, coordinate that? And, you know, because they'll be part of, you know, creating the form-based codes. That is, you know, something that we've expressed having them do.
Okay. So Lori and Terry is going to be it, then? Good luck. Number 30 is Cliff and Ray on Parks and Rec. And I think you just had a meeting with them. So I think you both wish to remain on that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was good.
Okay.
It went very well.
And if in the future anyone would like to step down, I would be interested in that.
31, Lee is on the Complete Street Safety Committee, and that's Terry and I currently.
I'm not real interested in that one.
Lori, you want to do that?
Number 31?
Number 31?
Sure.
Okay.
Would you rather do Recreation than the Complete Street Safety? Would you rather do recreation than the Complete Street Safety?
Well, I think they're, they're, they're both interesting, I mean, Complete Street Safety, I think, you know, just started about the safe routes to school, so.
Right.
Park and Rec is a little broader, but it depends, you know, there's different people on each of those, so it depends on whether those people want to continue. But I think probably Park and Rec would be a stronger interest, because it's a broader committee.
Because I was just thinking, if, if you were really interested in Parks and Rec, then, and Terry's not too keen on the Complete Street Safety Committee, since I was instrumental with Cliff to getting the Complete Street Safety Committee going, I'd be happy to take Terry's place there.
Oh, I see.
Let Lori do the Parks and Rec, if you want to do that.
Sure. So I would go on.
If that's your preference.
Park and Rec, and you would take over Terry's position on.
And then I could take Terry's place on the Complete Street Safety Committee.
Sure.
She doesn't seem to be too excited about it.
At all. Okay.
Hey, I'm just.
No, I, I.
You know, you tell me I'm gonna have a whole bunch of extra work with the planning commission and the, and the planning issues.
No, that's Ray's interpretation of it, he's just. Okay, brings us to, so Ray and myself would be on Liaison to Complete Street Safety, right, committee? Because I think you made the first presentation when you were mayor, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That'll kind of have continuity then, all right. Number 32, which is Sierra Point Design Guidelines, and Terry and Cliff, you're both on that?
I'm happy to stay on that one.
Okay, yeah, I know you guys got a work in progress. Number 33, which has been crossed out, City Attorney Recruitment, and I think David, you agreed to stay 30 years, right?
I think it was 20.
I, I certainly enjoyed working with that committee, but I'm very pleased to see that that one is now deleted.
Okay.
Given how long it took you to do the City Attorney, you might want to do that in the City Manager, you know?
That doesn't say anything on here, so.
When are you retired?
Sorry.
Just having watched the City Attorney recruitment process.
All right, 34, which is Planning Issues, and Terry, that you're on that, and I was on that, and Lori, you wish to take that over, and I think that'd be really good for you, because it's reviewing a lot of our ordinances before they come before the council, so.
Sure, that makes sense.
And brings us to number 35, which is Peninsula Cities Consortium, High-Speed Rail, Cal-MOD Train, Cal-Train, God, who wants to take that? I'm currently the representative, and somebody speak up.
When do you, when do you meet, Lauren?
All right, I think Cliff wants to.
He is interested in transportation, so.
He showed interest.
Eight, eight-thirty in the morning, Friday mornings, I think, every two months?
Now it's, now it's once a quarter, remember they?
Once a quarter, and it rotates cities between Brisbane, Burlingame, Palo Alto, and Atherton, and Belmont, I think it is.
You guys mostly dealing with electrification of Cal-Train?
Well, it's just more of an update, you're not really on the, there's, there's two different groups here. Okay, one is the Peninsula Cities Consortium, that's the one that meets eight-thirty on a quarterly basis. And really, it's just more of hearing what's going on with Cal-Train, it's not a decision-making body at all, just a consortium of decision-makers that don't make a decision. Okay, and, no, really, that's, that really kind of sums it up, it's just more of a communication forum, and it's actually a lot of good information out of, that comes out of that, you know, some very active people that show up regularly on that, and it doesn't matter which city it's in. And the other one's the High-Speed Rail, which not much is happening on that, that's stuck somewhere in the valley right now, right, on, in court?
Stuck trying to get more funding.
Yeah, and then the Cal-MOD Cal-Train, that's, that's the third one, and that meets, what, Wednesdays or, no, Thursdays or something, it's at night, like at six o'clock or something, and I don't know where they meet sometimes, Burlingame.
Well, you know, let me, if you could, if you could provide a schedule, because I, you know, sometimes boards will meet at the same time, and then there'll be a conflict, and I can't tell.
Yeah, I'm not sure you'd have a conflict on these, yeah.
I'll get you the background.
You're being penciled in, Cliff.
Okay, I'll take a pencil on that.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate it.
I know you would.
Actually, I got off of this one, because, well, it started with, I mean, the Cal-MOD, or the Cal-Train was meeting with Cal-Train, and then it was a decision, what they call a decision-making body, but the decision-making body wasn't making any decisions, they were being dictated to, I found it was more of a waste of time, because feedback was not being taken, and it's like, I don't want to waste my time with you folks, man, I mean, you, you don't listen to nothing. It's like, why am I here, you know? All I'm hearing is what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
You know, you're saying, we want your feedback, but you don't listen to anything, and, and that was frustrating to a lot of people, and even the Peninsula Cities Consortium had talked about that, and so now it's supposed to be more of a functional dialogue, and, you know, and it's, yeah, I think it's important for, you know, the electrification of Cal-Train, you know, and they're trying to do the hybrid system with the high-speed rail and Cal-Train, not sure how all that's gonna work out, but I think the most important is the electrification of Cal-Train, and I personally think that high-speed rail terminus should be in San Jose. I don't think it's just gonna fit between San Francisco and San Jose, with, especially, I mean, the, the one curve we have out here, which is termed an 85 mile an hour curve, you're not gonna straighten that out. You gotta slow down, no matter what you're doing, and according to their initial EIR, that the fastest their trains can go was like 155 miles per hour, the high-speed rail. The fastest they can go in, between San Francisco and San Jose, the absolute fastest that they could go at any single point would be 125 miles per hour. Now, electrifying Cal-Train, the trains could go up to 115 miles per hour, so you're talking a difference of minutes in billions of dollars. So, to me, it doesn't make sense to bring high-speed rail to San Francisco, other than it's just a real eagle jerk of saying, we got it from San Francisco to Los Angeles non-stop, you know? It's like, no, you can get off in San Jose and switch trains, you know? It's like, it's just, right now, to me, for the cost of it, it, it doesn't make sense, so. But there's a lot of nuances in it too, so just looking at it with a simple mind, and a tight pocketbook, I just don't think. Our money should go to that, but it is, it is interesting, so.
All right, if there are no conflicts, I'll, I'll take it on.
Okay.
With the other things that I'm doing.
And number 36, which, this is all gonna be renumbered, right, Sherry? Once we get a clean list, which is the Oversight Board, and this is the Oversight Board of the former redevelopment agency, and Ray, you're our representative, and I don't see any reason to change, I know you like it. Now comes to 37 and 38, which is Emergency Services and Health and Safety Issues, and I think probably I asked for one to be on, and Lori, maybe you asked the other, or?
No, I.
Oh, you did, okay.
Health and Safety Issue, you're Emergency Services, right?
Right.
I'm Health and Safety Issues, which, both of us, why don't you, you know, we can need to explain what we had in mind.
Yeah, all right, with, I'll go first. What I had in mind from Emergency Services is currently we have, well, formerly it was called CEVs, but now I think they're called CERTS, which is Citizen Emergency Response Team, or Community Emergency Response Team, not sure which acronym, or what, what the name is it stands for. But I don't see where we have a functional go-to thing of like a manual that outlines, delineates what really happens in an emergency. You know, we have our OES Commander, which is Randy Bro, it's a Officer of Emergency Services, and from there, they have a system that they work, and that system's uniform, and that's why they're called CERTS, is people know how it functions, but we don't have a list of our medical professionals in town, you know, from doctors, nurses, veterinarians, you know, that type of thing, chiropractors, you know, that, I think that we should have a list of, of folks that, that could be part of a team that we can call on if they're not at their place of duty, because, you know, it might be isolated, might be isolated for a long time, we're not sure exactly how that would work, and I think it would be real good to put together a manual, like, you know, Brisbane has a major food service supply industry here in Crocker Park, and that's, I know we have, we kind of have a coordination with BuyRight right now, but, you know, we want to be inclusive of all these food service places, you know, that, you know, we might have to be, you know, supplying our citizens with food and water, you know, and so we really want to kind of come up with something, as, as I view it, is something that's comprehensive, that, you know, what if Randy's in San Jose or in Connecticut, you know, that you need to have backup, and I think the, the council needs to understand how it functions, you know, as, as community leaders, we're elected community leaders, and, you know, we'd really be looked upon in an emergency, what do I do? I don't know, man, run, you know, I mean, that's what I'm doing, you know, I mean, you know, it's not the kind of leadership you want to give, and you want to have something that's structured, you know, and, and, and so that's my point, is being able to put something together like this, and it'll take a little bit of time, but I think it would be worth the effort, and how we put together a manual that we have, that, you know, everybody in, in the city and, and all our public safety employees and, and elected officials are cognizant of, and, and how it functions and how it works, and it kind of helps with the orderly thing, and then from that, we can, you know, disseminate that, you know, out into our, our public, you know, how we want to do it, so that, you know, it's not mass chaos, so, so that's my thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's really good.
Sounds like a very good thought to me, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be ones for with you, if you want to take that on.
And I'd talk to Lori.
Or maybe, yeah.
About it, since, since her other half is a medical doctor.
Right, so if he, if there were an emergency, and he were at or near work, he would probably get called into work, but if he's here, certainly it would be great to be able to utilize his services as well as other people's, and I would certainly want to know what the council roles are as well in the case of an emergency.
Yeah.
I think it's, there are so many great resources in our town, in terms of the residents and the businesses, like you said, I think it would be, you know, a travesty if we didn't utilize those.
Right.
And I'm sure there's other towns and cities that, or I hope there are, that, you know, we can look to, to see what they do.
Well, yeah, and actually, kind of what, you gave me the idea of this, there's a retired doctor, I think, is in Half Moon Bay, who is leading a program with part of the, the countywide OES, and that was one of the ones I asked, that maybe we have a, have him come and speak, you know, before the council, to kind of, gives you an idea of what, you know, how that functions, because they don't just, you know, they have actually a, a medical team that is comprised of a, a lot of retired folks that are still very active and still very knowledgeable, they have their profession and stuff like that, but they just aren't going to any specific hospital, but they volunteer their teams to cite disasters, and, but they said, you know, you really got to be prepared locally, and, and, and that's an important part, and so they could, I think, help, you know, from, from some of their ideas, I think, help, and, and I had talked to this one, maybe a year ago, and he said he'd be more than happy to kind of help with that, so, that's my idea.
Yeah, I think it's good. Well, I think if you and Lori have talked about it, yeah, maybe you guys should, should do it together.
Sure, and I'm not sure how, Ray, that overlaps with what you're.
I'll explain what I had in mind, which is very different.
Okay, all right, let's, let's, go ahead, Ray.
Okay. So what I had in mind was, you know, it seemed like another one of those areas that, that we don't really have in, within the jurisdiction of any of our subcommittees. A number of things keep coming up, we have ordinances about, but the ordinances don't really give the police the kind of authority or help that they really need in enforcing the ordinance, and so I've run across it in a couple of instances, one is, example is the noise ordinance, where the police are quite frustrated, because the way the noise ordinance is written, it has to be a continuous sound. Well, a lot of the sounds that annoy people, like loud music, if it's a drum or a bass file, it's not a continuous sound, it's a boom, 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 that's not defined as continuous, or if you have a truck backing up, it goes beep, 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 that's not a continuous sound, even though it's a damn annoying noise, you know? So the problem is that the ordinance isn't written, and the police are quite frustrated, because they'd like to enforce it, but the ordinance is not written in such a way to help them do so. And, and get a lot of, you know, I'm sure you all had complaints about things like that. We, and another thing I've run into is, is the ordinance having to do with dog walkers, you know, we really don't have any control over that, or what do you do with dogs that are not on lease who are dangerous, you know, and how do you get all those enforced? And we have a lot of these things in ordinances, but somehow or other, they haven't been written in such a way that enables the police to enforce them effectively. So what I was proposing for this committee is to go with the police, because we definitely don't have a subcommittee that works directly with the police on these kinds of issues, and say, okay, so how could we fix the noise ordinance so you could actually go after the things that bug people? How could we fix, you know, the whole dog ordinance situation, so, because there are a lot of people bothered by this, you probably all read about the, you know, the pit bull attack the other day, you know, and so, a, a lot of the things that the police want to do, the, our ordinances don't really give them the kind of clear instruction as to how to really make it happen, and it's quite frustrating to them, and they really stick to the letter of the law, you know, the police, you know, if it's not in there, like, somebody will say, how come you don't, well, that's not what the law says. And so what I was thinking, if, if we could go through a number of these ordinances of this nature that involve enforcement problems, and, you know, and, and we could go on into a whole lot of other examples too, and that's why I called it Health and Safety.
Okay.
Because there are a number of examples like this, these are the two that have been coming up in their emails recently, I'm sure you've all gotten emails about these things, and it would be something that we could help the police and, and get them on the, on the radar, and get them in our priority system, so that we can bring these ordinances in, in better shape, so that the police can do their job.
So let me ask you, Ray, would you think that that goes into the planning issues? Because those deal with ordinances, the planning issues actually.
Maybe we should just rename that one committee, Ordinance Review.
Yeah, you could, I mean, the, the planning issue, that committee was set up because of the complexity of a lot of the stuff that comes through the planning commission, and it really dealt with the building code and zoning ordinances, and they get pretty long and pretty complicated, and very often, at the council meetings, we'd go on and on and on and on about all these changes we want to make, and I think the decision was made, would be nice to have it looked at a little narrowly before it gets to the council level, which I would think was the point of the planning subcommittee.
Yeah, I think they're very different issues.
So I think it's very different issues.
Okay.
Right, because that deals with planning commission and building.
You know, and, and the health and safety issues, that's almost, you know, legal issues.
Yeah.
That are really going to take, I mean, a lot of our laws are based on county.
Right.
And, you know, gives us a certain level of enforceability, and then, you know, some things, if you're trying to narrow it down, I think are really going to be, you know, legal enforcement issues, and, and finding out, you know, even if we would like to look at an issue of, of, you know, abating some situation, we see like dog walkers with too many dogs, or, you know, those kind of things, I think once they get identified, they're really gonna have to go to legal to be fleshed out on, on what the mechanism for.
Right.
Making it enforceable is.
Oh, yeah, no question about it.
And, and I think it's very different than, than reading an ordinance and, and seeing what our intent is.
Right.
Which is what the planning issues are.
Right. Right.
Well, those planning ordinances would also go, you know, they'd be drafted by the city attorney, and everything would have to go through an attorney first before it comes to the council in terms of an ordinance. They're just different subject matters, really.
Oh, yeah. But, yeah, different kinds of things.
Okay, so I get it. I think that's good. And, you know, certainly, I think the help of the Police Department, you know, being a staff member, we could probably do it, so...
I would be also interested in serving on that, you know, with my legal background, I think.
Lori and Ray.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah, and while we're on it, I actually was going, I forgot to mention it during communications, if I may now, about, I have received some emails about the dog walking or the dog attacks recently. As you, I don't know if you know, there, it was on, it was posted on the Residents of Brisbane Facebook page and also on the Mothers of Brisbane email list. There was an incident on Clamath Street a few days ago where someone was out walking their dog, and another dog came up and attacked their dog, to the extent that the dog, like, needed to go through multiple surgeries and, you know, almost died. And SPCA eventually came and took the attacking dog away. And then, once that incident was, it was reported to the police, another person on the Mothers of Brisbane list, you know, wrote that she had a similar incident up on Golden Asher on my street, where her dog was attacked while walking by another dog that I, both of these dogs, I believe, were off-leash, and in her case, I think it was a pit bull. And then I received a third email communication directly to me, saying, you know, well, is there anything the city can do about pit bulls in particular? Are there any, can we enforce, you know, putting a muzzle on the pit bull? I guess that would be an ordinance. So actually, I was going to ask the city attorney to look into that, but then the two overarching issues are, you know, what are the leash laws and what enforcement is happening? And so I had spoken with Clay about it, and he said that the Chief of Police in January is going to make a presentation to the council on the current leash laws. So I wanted to let everybody know that.
Okay.
So if you would, please look into the issue of pit bulls and muzzles and whether that is something that can be required, or I don't...
It's, to me, I would like to hear the police reports, the police chief's report on it. It's really difficult when you start getting breed-specific, because, I mean, my dog was attacked by a golden retriever. We can't ban golden retrievers or treat them any differently than almost any other dog. So it's something that I have issues on. I don't think it's breed-specific. It is certainly dog and owner-specific, and it's something that is a very difficult, difficult thing.
Sure, it's a delicate issue.
Yeah.
But there are leash laws, I understand.
Yes.
Yes.
There are. I know that that happened to a number of years ago. Both of my dogs, you know, were attacked, and there was police report and stuff done, you know? Different times, well, they were on a leash, and another dog running off the leash and just come up and latch onto them.
Yeah.
Fortunately, they...
And it sort of happens with dogs. I mean, they're animals, and they're unpredictable.
Right.
Even if you think you know them, and you've got a dog that you could, you know, hand-feed and put your hand in their mouth, there are situations that create a different tension with the dogs, and it's so unpredictable that it's very difficult to eliminate it completely from your society. It's a really hard, hard thing to...
Yeah. The one thing I was going to add, and this is another ordinance we have that I know about, because I was attacked by a dog once, too. And I'm not a dog, I'm a, I think I'm a human. And that was a German shepherd.
Mine was a white German shepherd.
So, you know, anyway, we have a dangerous animal ordinance, and I think that's kind of what we should look at and ask the police, you know, do they really have all the authority they need to really enforce that? I mean, we do have the ordinance on the books. So it's not a question of our not being aware of these and not having ordinances. We do. The problem is of their effectiveness in giving the police the clear instructions as to what they can do. That seems to, from what I picked up in a number of instances, that really seems to be the issue, that the police are not sure what the ordinance enables them to do, or they feel that it doesn't give them the authority they need. So it's really a question of modifying and clarifying the ordinances that we already have by and large.
Okay. So council wishes to appoint these two subcommittees, with Emergency Services with Lori and myself, and the Health and Safety Issues with Ray and Lori?
Sure, yes.
Okay, all right. Is that pretty clear now, Sherry? We beat that one to death. Okay, we're extending this meeting to 10:30. Okay. All right, that brings us to Item C, which is discuss the timing of commission and committee appointment process. And Ray, I think you had requested this.
Yeah, I just thought, well, this was an item that was in the Brisbane City News, I'm sure you all got, and about the applications for the various openings on the commissions and committees, the advisory that the city council has. And so I thought, one, it was important to, and I'm going to ask Sherry to give the specifics on this, but the reason that I thought it would be good to be on the agenda is that we should bring it to everyone's attention in all the venues that we have, that these openings are occurring. And in some instances, people will reapply, and other instances, as Sherry will point out, we have actual openings. And so I thought it would be important for us to be aware of that, and all of us to, you know, to encourage people to apply. And there were a couple of changes in reference to what was in the Brisbane News as far as what the actual circumstances are, and also I thought it would be useful for all of us to see whose terms are up, so we can have a sense of that, too. That might form as to whether we want to encourage people to apply, or people to reapply, or whatever, you know? So I just thought it was important for us to have a little attention to this item, because all of these bodies are really important to us. And Sherry, I know you wanted to give more specifics on things that I just mentioned.
Okay. I put before you a piece of paper that has yellow highlights on the actual term expirations for each of the commission committees. And for the Planning Commission, we have two terms expiring, Jamil Manur and Karen Cunningham. And by the way, I've emailed all of the people whose terms are expiring and advised them of that, and gave them copies of applications to fill out if they like, so... And then on the Parks and Recreation Commission, there are three, so I have to note that on some of these committees, such as the Park and Rec, Complete Street Safety, and Open Space Ecology, we now have between five, you can appoint between five and seven members. So for Parks and Recreation, we have six people currently sitting, and there was, there were seven, there's one vacancy there, and there's three terms expiring, plus one possibility for another opening. So there's up to four for Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, and that one's, that one's an interesting one, because we have some members that are on a three-member subcommittee, and if we only appointed five, then that would probably alter that. Is that, because then you'd have a quorum. So I think that, you know, I think the intent on Park and Rec, I think the intent would really be to appoint seven, so that those working subcommittees can remain intact.
And through the grapevine, ever that all three of the commission members that are up for reassignment want to stay on.
Okay.
So that gives us six, so, yeah, so we need to look for another...
That's good. And I hope that's true with the Planning Commission, too, especially now, because it would be a shame to have to appoint new commissioners. It just wouldn't be fair.
Have we heard on the Planning Commission if...
I heard from Karen that she's, she asked for her last application, so she's looking to apply. I have not heard back from Jamil, but I just sent it out, so...
I'm pretty sure he will reapply.
I hope so. I hope so.
I did hear back from Don Cutler, though, today, that if she would, she's busy, he's got a lot of things going on, she'd rather not if there's other people who could serve, but she would if, she would remain if there wasn't anybody else to take her place, so...
Okay.
So then on the Complete Street Safety Committee, that's between five and seven. We just lost another member a couple of days ago, I was just told today, and I don't have her name. But, so right now, we have five members, and we do have an advertisement, obviously, so we can get a couple more members on that, if you like, so... And then Open Space and Ecology, there's one, two, five, and you can see that the terms that are expiring there. I guess I've heard that Sean may not reapply, so...
I would almost hope that we could, I know the terms are set terms, but it would be very nice if we could ask the current seated Open Space and Ecology Committee members to stay through the end of the comment period for the draft EIR, so that they can complete the work.
Yeah, and they probably will, because the deadline for applications is January 31st, and then you'll be doing interviews in early February, so all of these people will be serving...
Timing fits.
...if they like, and do it through January. So what I planned on doing was giving you a report after I get all of the applications in, and then we can look at where we're at, who's applied and reapplied, and what new applications we've gotten, and then we'll know whether we can, you know, how many nights we need to set for interviews, or whether it'll be easy, because we have a lot of reapplying people, so...
And when are the applications due?
January 31st. So I found that giving people January instead of doing it in December, we didn't, used to get very many applications in December, people are busy, and then in January, you'd hear about a bunch of people who were interested. So now I've made, given the whole month of January to get those in.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Yep.
All right. Last item, Item D, which is discuss January 2014 council meeting schedule. And Clay, you and I talked about this, that you want to...
Sure.
...time in on this?
Yeah, we have a conflict for council members and myself, excuse me, with regards to the second meeting of the month. So the conversation Clark and I had was to move the January 6 meeting to the 13th, so that there's only three weeks between the 13th and then the February 3 meeting. We'd hold January 27 open if we absolutely needed it. And so we'd probably just have the one meeting. It would also kind of helps us on the preparation end, too, because next week is a, or the, is it next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, actually, next week and the week after are short weeks, which makes getting the agenda together a little bit more challenging. So that gives us another week to put the January agenda together.
Sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
That sounds fine with me. And if the meeting is, if we do end up having a second meeting on the 27th, that date is not a great date for me. I'd have to arrange for some babysitting, but hopefully, we will just have the meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, my expectation is that we won't need that second meeting, particularly because we have the meeting the following week on the 3rd.
Yeah. And if it's an emergency and you can't make it, we can certainly move it to the 28th, right?
Yeah.
Which is a Tuesday, right? Okay, I think that's it, then? Okay, so...
We didn't make it before 10:30.
And I thought this would be a really short meeting.
Well, it is a really short meeting, and it's all relative.
Someone made a comment.
It's an hour and a half shorter than last week.
I have to say, I jinxed it. My wife goes, how long is the meeting going to be? I said, hour and a half, maybe. Two and a half hours.
Yeah, Ray said, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. Meeting adjourned?
All right.
All right. Good job, though. I mean, we got, you know, we never made it to...